I'd really like to thank her for her willingness to step in at a last-minute sort of work session we wanted to put together. I was on vacation last week. I was able to get a staff report done, which is in your packet, but she stepped up to the plate and I think knocked it out of the park with her slide deck. It's not as long as Heather's, it's not as cool as Rich's, but it's Mac PD and it's Parks and Rec. So, our hope is today that this work session's probably not going to last 60 minutes, but it will probably provide you with some information that I know everybody's getting in their inbox, whether it's through emails, whether it's through letters, whatever type of communication online. And the reason behind this is we had our department head meeting on a Thursday prior, a week and a half ago, and you know, I was getting into probably some of the weeds of where we're at with prohibited camping and where we're at specifically with the process with which we or will be undertaking. And it really dawned on some of our ET, our executive team, that this might be a good learning opportunity for the council as well, since we've got a couple new counselors or relatively new counselors that were not here in 19 when the initial camping ordinance was rolled out, prohibited camping ordinance specifically. So, this will be an opportunity to catch up to speed. It'll be an opportunity for you to understand where we're at, where we think we're going to be. Also share some photos of things that are going on in our park systems. I know David Renshaw's here, or was here, yeah, he's back there. And I know Director Muir will also take some slides as well and discuss really kind of the impacts we're seeing within the park system, some of the things that we're doing to mitigate those issues, but overall, sort of like the work impact that's taking place. So, with that, I really like, I'll have, I know Susan's controlling the deck, so let's go to slide one and kind of a brief overview of what tonight is. And it's an update on the challenges with camping on city property to include parks in the right-of-way. It's not about camping on private property, it's not addressing the houseless crisis, the shortage of affordable housing, or requests for action. All this is just informational for y'all to sift through and move, at least hopefully feel the support that I feel. And I would like, I think there's going to be a couple of slides in here that will talk about that. There is a great deal of misinformation out there, and I wanted to correct the record. And it's not my record, it's the record that's sometimes taken in the public as that the city council has taken sort of a malaise attitude towards this position, specifically towards prohibited camping. And as you've seen in my communications I give usually bi-weekly or weekly, sometimes dependent upon, I really want to convey that to our citizens that the council has, and Mr. Towery and our department heads have never shook or shoved away a request or the idea that the PD needs to not do something, okay? You've been there for us when we've asked it, whether it was for change in ordinances, whether it's for funding for things, and for that, I am appreciative, I know our police department is appreciative, and I know our citizens will be appreciative when we are able to finally start taking action after we had this sort of six to 12 months pause because of some ordinance tweaks and some inability to keep stuff within the city of McMinnville. So, there, I'm off my soapbox and let's go to the second slide. Back in 1999, really quickly, the city council did pass an ordinance prohibiting camping in the parks. That's always been against the law, so to speak, it's against park code. In 2017, though, the city code did not begin to touch or discuss camping in the public right-of-way. Public right-of-way, y'all know, it's either on the street or within the sidewalk areas of our city. We began to see things pop up throughout the city. You remember some of the stuff that was going on within the churches specifically, and at that time, we didn't really have a tool to handle that or address it unless it was through the planning department and some sort of a land use violation, something to that effect. In 2018, we moved the park rangers because we started seeing things pop up in the park systems. Specifically, we moved the park rangers program from the Parks and Rec Department strictly to the police department to deal with the increased safety issues. And candidly, the park rangers, that program involves enforcement, it involves also the ambassadorship, but a lot of it sometimes is dealing with some of the stuff that's going on within the park system that needs to be dealt with us and not Parks and Rec employees. We've also got the ability to supervise and train them in some techniques that will probably help them diffuse situations or handle situations, issue citations, et cetera. But in 2018 also, we experienced the clusters, the clusters that you would see at Fourth and Adams. Public frustration, and I think you all remember, was high. The Fourth and Adams encampments, I mean, there's actually camps on the corner of Fourth and Adams. There's a massive disruption on Marsh and Dustin Court. All those led to community outcry. So, we acted and the city council provided us with that, with an ordinance. Next slide, please. So, let me back up just a little bit. In 2019, there was a case that talked about Martin v. Boise. It's a decision that's issued which essentially limited each city's ability to prohibit camping within the public right-of-way. We came up with an ordinance that crafted an ordinance that still allowed it in certain locations during certain times. That passed the muster of the Boise decision. In May, council passed 5064, that ordinance which prohibited camping in certain locations outright. You remember, we're talking about the residential areas and as well as the economic improvement district downtown, right? The camping on those, like, those were outright banned, but in other locations, it's a time, place, and manner. You can do it, but you have to be out by a certain time and you have to pick up your belongings. During that time, other communities, we, as you know, are not the only community dealing with this. We sent one of our officers up to Oregon City and we started this homeless liaison-type position with this officer, and this officer would go and work with the community, the houseless community, and try to provide them with information about how to get services, whether it's YCAP, whether it's chemical dependency, HHS, all that sort of stuff. We had sent him to Oregon City because they had a really on-the-ground method where that officer up there was really doing some really cool legwork and trying to get people plugged into services. We adopted that, and he now works directly with the homeless community and connecting people, as you can read up in the slide deck, to resources. That's what we're trying to do. And it's a change of emphasis. It's not just hammer, 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 it's try to find them solutions. City's gone about it in sort of lockstep. You know, you've got navigation centers that are online, you've got other things that will be coming online. Those are big things, those are changes in emphasis. And I think that goes to show the city is willing to work with the homeless population, but also, also, the important piece is that there are those within that community that don't want the help, that don't care to clean up after themselves, and quite frankly, don't want to. It's sort of a criminal-type behavior. To that point, in 2019 through 21, we worked on cleaning up most of the locations within the city, that being RVs, campsites, tents out on Marsh Lane, Dustin Court, Fourth and Adams. Those were all cleaned up. Now, you're going to get from time to time, we're going to have those pop-ups. There's no silver bullet in this situation, but there is, so we cannot go into these new times thinking that we're going to solve this and that Counselor Gary, Mayor Drapkin, that you're not going to receive complaints anymore. That will continue to happen, that's just the nature of what we're dealing with. But we were able to clean it up through the work with the Parks and Rec Department, or not Parks, but Public Works, worked in lockstep to get things cleaned up rather quickly. And I think there was some great success. In 2021, Senate Bill 410 passes that requires the cities to tag notice and store all property for 30 days. That's where we ran into a problem with our ordinance and our ability to do what we are required to do under the law. Now, we've seen basically, I would say the better part of eight to 12 months of a pause in our ability to ORVs and vehicles that are being lived in. And so, that's created these clusters that we're all seeing now, we're all getting emails about, whether it's McDaniel Lane, which is unsightly, it's embarrassing. Marsh Lane is now back to not where it was in 19, but it's pretty dang close. Dustin Court's seeing the same problems. I got an email from Counselor Minkie just this afternoon saying that they've had to add security up there. That is not where we want to be as a community, that is absolutely not. So, the hope is that the new updated code that we were updating in February of this year, which will capture the gap that we had within our ordinance and the ability now that we've rented a piece of property and is in the midst of site improvements, that we will get back to the 2019-2021 rhythm of being able to pull these RVs out of the residential areas when they're in violation of prohibited camping. In '22, as you can see, I've talked about this a lot in our email communications even here, the city has signed a lease agreement with a private party for storage of this. This is a three-year lease that we have, and we're excited to be working with the landowners and the property owners and the planning department to get that online. I know there's some hoops that need to be jumped through, but for '22, I'm optimistic that we're going to see a real push and a change in our ability to handle the situation. So, that's sort of where we're at from early on to today. I'm going to kind of state the obvious. This is some of our community complaints that we're seeing that you're getting. There's safety concerns within the neighborhoods. It's the mental health issues that are going on in these camps and our encampments. It's the fights that are taking place. I had an email and a conversation with our front office and our staff on Monday where there was a fight near Juliet's house where somebody was camping, and all of a sudden, this fight drags onto the Juliet's house property or right near it. It's affecting our residential community's safety. Visual impacts on neighborhoods. I know Director Muir, I know David Renshaw, I know you all receive these emails, complaints about just the visual impacts they have on neighborhoods, the denigration of the value of property in our neighborhoods when this is allowed to happen. The garbage, the environmental concerns. When I talk about environmental concerns, I know you all know what I'm going to be talking about is the human waste that goes along with these sites. The amount of work that it causes David Renshaw's crew to clean up, Dale Marshall, we're just having communications with today, they're leaving piles and piles of garbage when they leave. They don't care. To that point, I know it's affecting the Parks and Rec people that are working in there, and I know Director Muir will talk more about that. But long-term camping is happening, and it's not on you, it's on our ability to pull cars and store them. And it appears, like I mentioned, it appears like it's a malaise from the city council or ours. It quite frankly isn't. We've worked and we're acting in an appropriate and prudent manner. We're not just rushing to find a solution and just throwing something and putting ourselves at risk for litigation. But we're also, but, so, I want to again, point out that we are not, the city as a whole is not not acting. We are acting, and we're acting in a reasonable manner. We just have to get some things back online. And then the damage to the infrastructure, I know Director Muir and David will comment later on, I'm not sure, but the damage to the infrastructure, whether it's in the park systems, whether it's the park property, we're seeing that at a great expense to the city as well. So, next slide. So, this is our enforcement challenges. You know, I think when Susan put up, we're challenging assumptions. The assumption is we're not doing enough, or the assumption is we're not, we're doing too much. We got to find a sweet spot, in my opinion, okay? We got to find, in my opinion, we have to find a reasonable solution to a long-term issue that is not going to be solved by your police department, is not going to be solved by city council. It can't be, because it's just, it is prevalent throughout society. But we have to challenge the assumptions that we're not doing enough or that we're doing too much. We have to find the ability to continue to work with our wraparound partners, whether it's at YCAP, HHS, mental health, continue to involve those aspects while still having the ability to take action when there's those that are not, do, or refuse to come into compliance with us. So, that goes along with the reasonableness, finding property and resources for towing. We looked for months. Counselor Garvin was out looking for properties, probably at midnight, but he's, I mean, you guys all are exhausted with fielding these complaints. We were able to work with a partnership, actually Nick Miles with Code Compliance was kind of identified, this is a spot. And Captain Simons, who's done a heavy lift on this thing, we were able to find a piece of property, and with your support and Mr. Towery's support, we were able to come to this solution. I'm sorry, missed me. So, again, as I'm going to mention, there is a lack of a long-term solution, there is. There is no magic bullet or silver bullet that we're going to find. But the long-term solution, I think, is in these wraparound services and the long-term ability to house people, whether it's through the navigation center, the compass center, whatever you want to call it, whether it's going down and utilizing some of the stuff, the ability for people to live in transition down at what used to be Motel 6, those areas. Those will help. We're also in discussions with other entities, whether it's HHS, whether it's other sheriffs, the sheriff's department, with mental health, the fire department, to come up, again, we'll talk about this a little bit later, I'm positive this will come to you at some point, with the opioid settlement we've talked about. There's a push to do this sort of wraparound community care service to try to help these folks out that want the help, to get them pulled out of whatever situation they are in, whether it's mental health, whether it's chemical dependency, whether it's the ability to have stable housing, and find them and give them a long-term outlet. That's where we're trying to put this. This is not a one-size-fits-all, it's not just enforcement, it's going to be wraparound. So, to that end, we need to continue to tell our story about what we can and can't do. I can't, I'm not going to fix everything, I don't have the magic, the magic wand that says this is never going to happen, neither do you. You're going to, we're going to continue to see this. But we need to tell what we're doing and what we can do under the law, and we need to hammer that message home to our constituents, to our citizens. All right. They're saying you're going too long. And then, not enough resources for enforcement and cleanup. You know, we have to look at, and I don't know if it's in the slide deck that's coming up, it may be, when your police department or your parks maintenance people are pulled, it is costly. We're paying really good wage to do sometimes menial labor, whether it's camp cleanup, campsite cleanups by a sergeant or a captain, whether it's Dale Marshall or David Renshaw having to go out and pick up trash. That is, we're not putting, we don't, and it's not a fix that I'm asking you for, it's just the understanding that enforcement and cleanup is going to be costly. We're paying, you know, upwards of $3,000 to $4,000 a tow to get something dismantled. That's a lot, and you funded us. So, there's not an infinite amount of money, there's finite money, but we all understand, and we need to make that message clear to our constituents, that this is a costly, taxpayer-funded cleanup that's going on, and this is where your tax dollars are going. So, we need to continue to beat the drum, we are working at coming up with a solution. Next slide, please. Some couple pictures that you're seeing right now. I mean, this is McDaniel Lane. This is, this is McDaniel Lane up by, right across from Warpman Park. This is down the street on McDaniel Lane. This is the stuff we're seeing. We can continue to go and talk to these people and tell them, you need to move, you need to move. They don't want to move, so guess what? We're going to make them move. And you have to understand that we're doing it as compassionately as possible. We're going to give them a tremendous amount of lead time to know, you got to go. But at the end of the day, there needs to be a line in the sand, and when they don't comply, there will be action. And it's okay to take that action, that our community expects more from us in our ability. We don't want to turn into, for lack of a better, what Portland looks like in some areas. So, that's where we're at right now with up on McDaniel Lane. Next slide. Top right, as you look, the blue tents, that's what Dustin Court and Marsh Lane looked back like in 2019. This is where this bottom trailer right here cost us $5,000, cost, not cost us, I said cost a city, $5,000 to get ripped off, to get towed off, excuse me, and tore up. I mean, this is an expensive venture. So, your tax dollars at work right here, and again, we're going to continue to attack this problem in the coming months and weeks. So, good news is that it has cleaned up a little bit. It's not at all where it needs to be, but we're thankful for the partnership again with David Renshaw and his crew in these specific instances, but we're going to clean it up. Next slide, please. Hey, this is where, this is where a screen tow lot will be. I don't know the exact address, and quite frankly, it doesn't matter, but this is where they're going. We've got the ability to probably put 20 to 25, I would imagine, RVs, trailers, vehicles that are being lived in here. This is where they will be stored for, stored for upward of 30 days. Candidly, I was talking to Director Muir yesterday, you would think that the neighbors would go, what's going, well, they did, they go, what's going on here? And Captain Simons was out there with Director Richards at the time. And this is how appreciative our citizens are of the work that we will be doing. They're from California, and they said, what's going on here? Is this going to be a police storage lot? And Captain Simon says, yeah, well, yes, it is. It's going to be a storage lot where we're taking those that are sitting on the streets, abandoned RVs, or not abandoned RVs, but RVs that are in violation of prohibited camping. The gentleman said, I came from LA. Thank you for finding some solutions at least. So, to that end, no, you're going to get, we're going to get beat up by some portion of our public, but at the end of the day, it's the silent majority that understand the good work being done that needs to be done to clean up the neighborhoods that our kids and our relatives live in. So, I'm super excited to get this thing up and running, and I know our team is as well. Next slide. I'll let Susan talk about this.
Thanks, Chief. Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, I, the chief, I want to thank the chief too. He thanked me at the beginning of this, but really, the work that we do on these projects in the parks really truly is a partnership between the police department, Public Works, which is where the Parks Maintenance Team is, and then the Parks and Rec Department. And I'm going to try and illustrate that for you here. In Parks and Rec, we focus on making our parks safe and welcoming for everyone. Sometimes that's challenging to do, but with the partnerships that we have across the city, we do our best with the resources that we have. And one of the things that I always think about is, if you see something in a park that you find scary or unwelcoming, to us in Parks and Rec, it means we need to program that space so that there is more positive activity in the space. So, when, that's the way we think about it. And if you remember back, I think it was probably 2018, the summer, Lower City Park was kind of the hotspot for this. And if you'll remember, we passed an ordinance, brought forward an ordinance to you, and you passed it, that would allow us to do more events and more events with different types of amenities, like drinking alcohol, and try and program that space and rent it out and incentivize good behavior down at Lower City Park. At the same time, the Parks Maintenance Crew was clearing the hillside down there and really taking away those blind spots to try and keep more eyes on Lower City Park. And I think if you go down there today, you'll see that it's not, it's not a scary place, and it really has changed a lot of the elements down there. That's a concept called SEPTED, that's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And that means that you try and open up spaces of natural surveillance where there's no, there are sightlines all through the park and people can see and feel safe. It deals with maintenance and making sure that you have the proper resources to maintain things. We all know that graffiti spurs more graffiti. Same concept with garbage in a park, we see it attract more negative behavior. Then it also, SEPTED also deals with something called territorial reinforcement, where when something feels like it's taken over by a particular group, others don't feel welcome going into it. And so, doing things like programming can really help us get that territorial enforcement, that this is a public space, we welcome all, we use it for good things, and we want people to really focus on positive behaviors in the parks. So, those are the kinds of stories that we are working on every day to try and deal with what some people call us and complain about, which is feeling unsafe in the parks or feeling unwelcome. Intimidated is another word that we often hear. And so, those are the kinds of elements that we do with Parks Maintenance and the police department to try and make the parks more friendly and safer to all. So, this is an image of West Warpman, this was just from June of 2022, and this was starting, it's starting to grow, they kind of start, and then if there's no enforcement or no presence there, they kind of grow. And so, this one, you know, we made a call to the police department, Parks Maintenance was dealing with it the best that they could, and Liz and David and their whole team do amazing work to try and keep this type of element out of our parks. And it's a lot of work, and it takes a lot of resources, so thanks to Liz and David and their team for this. But when they start to see these kinds of things, we engage with the police department, they were able to communicate to the folks that had all of this stuff, that that was unacceptable, and the next, the enforcement part comes along. Oops. So, this is enforced upon, the garbage is gone, but the maintenance is still lacking a little bit because we don't have the resources to repair that chimney and fireplace, so it still looks a little neglected. But this is, this is good compared to what it was when it felt intimidating to approach it, or there were barriers to people feeling safe in the park. So, this is what it looks like when we do the best we can without programming. And then, I think it was two days after this, this is what the park looks like with programming. And this is the same, right outside the same shelter at West Warpman, this is one of the Wednesday at Warpman, or actually, I think this was a picnic in the park event. And you can see, we've programmed the space and it's got positive activities happening in there. It's got eyes on it, and hopefully, people are seeing these types of events and feeling welcome in the parks. So, I think the, you know, we try and do this summer fun is one of those things that's really helping with that, where we can go from park to park and continue to have activities and continue to work with the resources that we do have in Parks Maintenance and also the park rangers. I will say that I have noticed a difference since they moved over to the police department, and I want to thank the corporals who've taken that on this year, and I know we had some hiring challenges, but they're out there now. We're getting a few more on, and the more they have a presence in the parks, the more we also see a decline in negative behaviors. And we'll hope to build that resource as well. It's really all of these things coming together for the parks that do the most, do the most positive work for us to achieve our goals of making our parks welcoming to all. And I think, Matt?
Yeah.
Back to you.
So, hey, we're looking forward to anticipating more towing of the violators. Okay, that's what we're going to see in the next month, I can promise you that. We're also going to have, continue to have a homeless liaison work as part of enforcement. We'll say that part of the, as we got a call from Director Muir and Liz and David from Parks, or excuse me, from Public Works, we have shifted an officer, the liaisons officers' hours from 3:00 to 11:00, 3P to 11P. That is to focus entirely, or the majority of his time, as much as he can, dealing and making sure that these parks are safe, that people are complying, and that they're out of the parks an hour after sunset. So, big time positive with that. The tow notice, and I wanted to get, it requires a 72-hours notice of this campsite. When I say it's a towing notice, it's essentially, you have 72-hours to vacate an encampment. Got to be posted in English and Spanish within that, we've got to provide lists of information about resources homeless populations can access to help them. We've also got to, we have to communicate with a public partner to ensure that they're aware that this camp was essentially abated and that people could be looking for services. So, there's a process here, it's going to be 72-hours, but it's not a one-time hit there. It is multiple times that we're going to this, to these encampments. Yes, Counselor Minkie?
So, this towing, is that strictly for RVs or is that for cars too evidently?
It's for any, it's for any vehicle being lived in. As you remember in...
It's state law, I mean, reduce the 72-hour notice?
I cannot hear you very well.
Can we reduce the 72-hour notice, say not maybe for RVs, but for vehicles, cars?
So, as you recall, in February, we did, you all did a tremendous amount of work. So, we siloed, okay, there's an abandoned vehicle code that is, that we can, if a vehicle meets the abandoned vehicle code, it can be towed within 24 hours if the vehicle is believed to be inhabited. That's a completely separate process where we noticed that as a campsite, because in our code, a vehicle is, can be considered a campsite. So, that is a completely separate process with which we use, that's where we're doing more communication with the campsite, and we're giving an ample opportunity to vacate, and if they don't, that's when we tow. So, separate processes.
Okay, yeah, I do remember the discussion. I just am wondering why we cling to the 72-hours for cars?
You can. So, if a vehicle...
No, I'd rather not. I mean, we've got people using neighborhoods to park their extra vehicles. I don't know, maybe they're doing validated parking or something, I don't know.
So, this is specifically for vehicles that are being used to camp in, okay? You can see them down...
Right. Right. These are not vehicles that are going to be camped in. So that's, I just wanted to be sure we could change the time on it then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then-
What resets that 72-hour notice?
I've even got my hearing aids in, I-
What resets the 72-hour clock? So-
Remember, as part of the ordinance, if a campsite moves 1,000 feet, it is considered a new campsite and needs to be posted, and 72 hours restarts that clock. So yes, that can happen.
And campsite is anything from a tent, turtle dive, car, RV, anything?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then also, we're going to include, within those contexts, inclusive, the resources for housing assistance in the notice. That's a requirement, so those are, we're doing due diligence, we're doing, in my, in my estimation, we're doing as best as we can to educate and try to plug the, these, these folks into resources that can help them. At the end of the day, it's going to be their call as to whether or not they want to do, to comply with the, the camping ordinance.
Are, are local tow providers on, on board with?
Yes. Yes, so they're, they're just towing to the storage lot. We've got somebody else we contract with for the disposal and dismanaging.
And what, per your last report, it seems like there's more out there in the city than we have capacity to initially tow. So how do we prioritize who's getting towed and who's not?
Well, I think that's an excellent point. We'll prioritize by the amount of time that they've been there, if there's problem behaviors associated with those. I think that's all that needs to go in the equation. If they're causing community concerns, if they're causing issues within the neighborhood, if they're, if they've been there the longest, we will certainly deal with those appropriately. I think as you can remember, in 2019, there was a mass exodus up on Martian Dustin when the trigger, lack of a better term, not a great term, when it was decided to be a go-live. So you're going to, the people will be moving, trust me. It is not going to be a towing of 20 vehicles in a given day. It could be over a period of time, but you're also going to see a number of these vehicles, all of a sudden miraculously, they will move. So to that point, I don't think we're going to be as inundated as it possibly could be. I think we're going to see some movement up to, leading up to that, the drop dead date.
And then, do we have a drop dead date yet? Or what are the final hurdles before the E-Team moves to that drop dead date announcement?
Yeah, so as soon as we have our, our clock, as soon as we're given the green light by Director Richards with planning, that we're good to go, we will give a drop dead. That's when we're going to start saying, this is your date. This is what we're planning on doing.
And what's, what's the holdup with her office? What's the final, because the screening's up, so what's the final things for her?
There's, there, there just is some, some boxes she needs to check with respect to how, how the light, the lot currently sits. We, the gentleman gravelled it. She's not sure if there needs to be, oh, hold on.
Thank you for joining us.
I was working on reducing my presentation for seven o'clock. So if I understood the conversation I heard is what's the holdup on getting the site occupied and, and moving forward?
Just the final boxes to check. You know, it seems like we're dotting i's and crossing t's right now, but how many of those do we have to do?
The only thing left to do is just defer the improvements that are necessary. So there's landscaping improvements necessary associated with the site. We defer those improvements for other development projects as well. To defer the improvements, we just need a cost of what the improvements are and some sort of security. And I'm thinking we can get that security fairly easily through the city as, as the applicant, and we just sign an agreement. As soon as we get those costs in, we could have the agreement done in a day.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
I do think, talk, I met with Tim on site two days ago, and the, the one sort of complicating issue is the water main and getting access for irrigation. And so that, I think his contractor and the property owner are working through that issue right now to find out what that will cost.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
She's a smart one. She's a smart one, so thank you.
Other than that, everything else is working in parallel, so once that's done, we can start acting? Or what, once you get the green light from Heather, Matt, how, how much longer till we can start towing?
Again, I, I think our best guess is we get green lighted from planning. I think we give people a week to two weeks to prep for this with a lot of notice and a lot of outreach as we did in 2019. And I think we are within a couple of weeks from the green light from the Planning Department.
Okay.
Given us the green. We are, everything else is set in place. The ordinance is set in place. We've got the funding to do what we need to do. It's just, it's just the ability to occupy.
Chief, so has the notice process begun? Has the notice process begun? I'm having a hard time hearing here too.
Wants to know if the notice process has begun.
Have you started notifying them that this will happen in a certain period of time?
We've already started noticing, but we haven't given them, this is the date.
No, I, I get it. What is the date?
Yes, that's been going on for months. Like specifically when we started wrapping up the parking lot, so the storage lot, we knew it was coming. Time to communicate. The time is coming upon us where you're not going to be allowed just to sit here and, and, and-
So what is the tow date?
We don't have an exact tow date yet because we're waiting for these other boxes to be checked.
Okay.
Yes, I will communicate that once I get it. I promise you that.
Any way to give us an estimate?
I don't know. So I'm, I was, after visiting with Tim on Monday, we met on site. I'm going to call the property owner because there might be some just telephone misinformation as it crosses through a bunch of people, to just let him know exactly what we need and how to move this forward. It, it really, it's, it shouldn't be that complicated. We should be able to put a number together, and if we make it very conservative and have the security for the number, all the city's looking to do is ensure that those improvements happen and have something in place that, that we know it will happen either we as the development side do it ourselves, or the developer does it. The reason, we're, we're, and I appreciate this with Tim, he wants to make sure not only everything is minimum standard, but actually we're, you know, following the process to above standard because we are the city and, and, you know, should show some leadership in terms of our process.
I appreciate all that. Any estimate on when this might be completed?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's not a contractor involved, and that's the problem, and why we're not getting pricing or-
You understand, the pressure we're hearing on emails is when is this going to happen? So if we have an estimate that we can give, it makes it a little easier.
I get that. So why don't I work with Tim and the property owner tomorrow, and we'll try to email something out to you? I, I need to understand more what's going on, and I, and I don't.
And then as far as cleanup resources, do we have everything that you need for that as far as lined up? As far as, I think last time you guys were using tractors and back trucks and dumpsters, and is that kind of all teed up? We're not going to get to this green light date? And then it's like, oh, well, we're waiting on recology to get us some dumpsters, or we're waiting on Botten to get us some tractors, or?
Nope, that will not be a, be a problem. We'll, again, we'll coordinate. We're going to start coordinating with David's group. We're going to start coordinating with recology when it's time to start securing those assets when that time comes.
Okay, thank you.
What's the presumed lot's capacity?
By my estimations?
Yeah.
And I'm, I would say 20 to 25 RVs.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a fairly sizable lot.
Well, thank you, Chief. Are there any other questions from Council for the Chief or Director Muir?
Mayor, there's a couple more bullets we wanted to cover.
Oh, well then, let's do that.
And Chief, can I take these top three?
I'm sorry?
Can I take these top three bullets?
You betcha.
One of the things that the Chief and I have talked about is increasing the Park Ranger presence. As you know, we focus on the summer, and they end sometime around Halloween, depending on how many hours they're all scheduled for. It would be great if we had a year-round presence in the parks, somebody that could go through and check restroom doors and just, you know, keep a presence in the park. That would be something that, seeing that increase sometime in the future would be really helpful. The additional park programming, you know, shout out to Katie Noid and Sam Geary for doing the Summer Fun Program. That is a lot of work, and we want it to be bigger because we are drawing a lot of people to that and making things happen in the parks. And then I think we've done a pretty good job of laying out over the last few months the situation, pretty dire that we have in park maintenance with the backlog, both in terms of modern equipment and staff resources. You know, I asked Liz Pizarra for an estimate of how much time we spend cleaning up the impacts of nearby parks, or nearby camps in parks, you know, and we're looking at more than a day a week, 12 hours committed to just dealing with these impacts. And, and that takes away from the work that we can't do. And as you know, there's a lot of work that we can't do through the resources that we have in park maintenance. So we, we think that those things would additionally go further help because we also know, like the Chief mentioned, there's not a, this is going to be a problem that every city has to deal with for a while. And so we want to continue to build those positive things that can happen in our parks and make them safe for everybody.
I think that's a wrap.
Thanks, Chief.
I think that's a wrap, isn't it? As I end, and I know if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, I just want to, for those that have walked in, I truly, the Police Department, blessed to be able to work for a city that's got a manager that understands and department heads that work together. We're only as, I mean, we are a cohesive team. We all understand that what happens at the PD impacts the parks, what happens at the parks impacts the PD, the fire department. It's all, we're all one magnificent team. But the people in the dais right now, there are cities that are, are not working this problem, and to your credit, you are. So congrats and thank you for your support and your continued understanding and patience as we navigate this very, very difficult time. So with that, if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you for your support financially, through ordinances, et cetera. It's been, it's been great. I've had tons of people, other chiefs, talk to me about what we're doing.
Thank you, Chief. Any additional, Counsel Gary?
Thank you for the presentation, Chief, Director Muir, Mr. Renshaw for all the work. You know, big, big effort. My, I guess my main question, this lot is going to be a boon to our ability to, to have movement on the issue, visible movement. Are you, or will you look for additional lots, or could we onboard and take on more lots if those opportunities were to present ourselves? Or will this tax our capacity? Or how would that happen if, if more lots were made available, or, or another area?
Well, if there's others that are needed, should we explore is what you're asking?
Yeah.
Certainly, I, but again, maybe I'm wishful thinking. I, I don't know if this, this is going to be at capacity. Maybe in 10 years it will be, who knows? So certainly there needs to be due diligence in, in exploring additional resources and opportunities to, to have these facilities that store property for 30 days, specifically vehicles. So to that end, it would be a policy direction from, from the Council and say, hey, continue to look, continue to search. I think we're going to be good for a period, a decent period of time though, candidly.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Claudia, did you want to add something before we?
Yeah. Counselor Peralta asked, have the police been able to fully staff Park Rangers? If not, can the workforce Rangers be extended past Labor Day?
Great question. So last year, we, I think we only had a couple Park Rangers. This year, although late starting, I believe we are not necessarily, we can always add more. I think we're probably at four right now that have come online that are working, or will be working. We're always, can add capacity. So although we were slow to roll out, I think some of the workforce challenges in our ability to pay maybe a little bit more has attracted more people. I, I would anticipate each year, we don't spend that entire Park Ranger account down. So I'm all for taking it longer into the summer. And candidly, I think it would be awesome, amazing if we're able to fund a couple positions even throughout the year, just to monitor what's going on. And they're not full-time positions. They can be, not seasonal, but they can be part-time. But the ability to have people in these parks, contact the folks, and know exactly what they're doing, and providing proactive information and enforcement is going to be crucial to making sure our parks are, are cleaned up. In perpetuity, in my opinion.
Thank you. And Council President?
I was curious if Mr. Renshaw had anything to add from his staff's perspective and capacity, since we haven't heard from you tonight?
If you could join us with a microphone, that would be preferable. Thank you.
We could hear you about the recording, can I?
How about now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, just real quickly, I appreciate the opportunity and appreciate what Chief Scales and Director Muir put together. Just a couple elements, some things that we, we've had to obviously adjust our practices to, to deal with this additional workload. One of the things that we're doing is a little outside the box is we've actually moved, we assign on a rotating basis someone to come in after hours now, a couple, three, four days a week to check restrooms specifically. We'll go in, make sure the restroom's cleared after the, the doors are supposed to lock, then make sure the doors are actually locked, because that, what that, that defeats the behavior of someone actually blocking the door open in the span of the night. That way we know in the morning, no one spent the night there. We can't afford to do it every day of the week, but it's a, it's a start. But what that does, of course, it creates a pull away from our normal work. What this is, is this sort of work is, is a huge impact on both our street staff and our park maintenance staff. And what the real dilemma is, that it's demand work. It's now work. It's, it's, you, you have to respond instantly. It's not as if we can throw some cold mix in a puddle and come back and patch it next, next summer, or we can maybe not mow that lawn today. It's work that has to be done right now. And so folks have to divert their attention to, to those tasks. And the reality is, it's pulling away from capacity that isn't there. And you've heard that song, and y'all are aware of that. But it's, it's really reached a point now, it's quite obvious that for our folks to do this, we have to divert our attentions from work we should be doing. And that's frustrating for the staff and, and for the residents. I think it doesn't, it does have an impact on morale. We've talked about that before, obviously, and the folks have done a pretty good job of staying on top of it, but it's a tough deal. You know, Chief Scales will attest to that. It's, it's a tough ordeal, particularly when you're working on clearing one site, knowing you're going to come back in a week and pick up the same material. That's frustrating for folks to see a lack of progress. I did want to point out that it's not just in the park system as we recognize it. You know, we're seeing camping in rights away. You know, for example, we may have camping below the police station right across the street. That's actually Second, Second Street right away there. We'll, we'll have camping activities in, in the big culvert that goes under Elmwood. We have camping activities in a big culvert that goes under Davis Dip. We have camping activities in the parkland on the end of Dayton Avenue, on Railroad Avenue behind the, the storage units there. So it's, it's not just in the park system, and I kind of wanted to make that point. I think that's an important thing to recognize, that, that it's happening throughout our system. We see it, ODOT sees it on their ground across from, from Walgreens in that kind of dip along the creek. It becomes a job safety issue. Obviously, when you're dealing with sharps and those sorts of things, we have the potential for sticks, and we've had sticks. And that is a significant job risk. So we recognize that this is part of the task, part of the stuff that we're asked to do every day. But the point I really want to make is that as you add things into that bag of things that we have to do, pretty soon that bag's full. And today, the bag is way, way over full. There's other words I could use, but I won't use those. So, and Susan had it right, we spend about 30 hours a week, round figures, or excuse me, 30 hours a month on the street crew, about 48 hours a month on the parks crew cleaning up stuff, whether it's moving tents or removing debris. The park staff sees it on their daily rounds. Wortman is just one example. Street staff sees it mostly in response to either camping complaints that code enforcement bring to us, or our property owners will bring to us. And it can, it can be anything from a pickup and two guys moving material out to a full-blown effort with backhoes and dump trucks and back, tractor trucks and a whole deal. But the real message is that it's demand work. That's probably the biggest thing I want to understand. It's work that has to be done now, and we don't get to say no. So it literally pulls us away from things we need to do. And it's the same thing for the Police Department. Officers that should be patrolling the streets or enforcing traffic safety laws are doing this. That's the real impact. That's the real impact. And I guess the last thing I'd say is, for us, I, I, I don't focus on the source of the behavior. It doesn't matter to me. It's negative behavior. It doesn't matter to me. The, the source of it is immaterial. So i- if we're going to have to deal with this, then as we move forward, we're going to have to address the resource issue and, and figure out the best way that we can manage, manage it within the resources that we're going to be able to keep. That's the task at hand. So with that, I'll take any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Is there, are there any questions from the councils specifically? Mr. Renshaw?
I have a question for the chief.
I don't have any questions for you, David, but I just want to say thanks for the additional contacts and gives me some-
Can't hardly serious, sir.
Thanks for the additional contacts and gives me something to work with going forward.
Thanks, y'all, Ken.
Yes, and, and also a please from, I, I feel very comfortable saying on behalf of the council that we would like our appreciation expressed into all of your departments that are working with these very difficult issues and all of the staff that are affected and working on solving these issues on a daily basis. Please, please express our gratitude and our appreciation.
Will do. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Counselor Chen, with you had, you had another question?
Yeah, for the chief. It's tangential, but since we're talking about funding of Park Rangers, it, it, it's on the tip of my mind, so I want to hit it while I've got you. Where are we at with SROs?
SROs?
Yeah.
Uh, this year, I communicated, I thought I did communicate through memo or text, not text, email. SROs will not be in the high school or the middle school this year. We don't have the capacity currently through our vacant, because of our vacancies, to staff them. Communication with the Dr. Brockett, as they have chosen this year to go with campus safety officers, since we cannot staff that. And we'll revisit, I think she was open to revisiting it as they, as we turn into next fiscal year.
So I just want to go on record, I agree with that, but I just want to go on record as saying, please revisit that when you can. And I think it's very important that our, we have SRO officers and I'd like to see that back in place.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. It's important to me as well.
Do we have any other questions from councilors at this time? I'm sorry, it's hard for me to see down here. You two are backlit and it's, have any, any additional questions? No. Chief, thank you very much.